Good evening and welcome to the City of Norman City Council Study Session of October 18th, 2022. First item on the agenda is a discussion regarding microtransit pilot program.
Thank you, sir.
If I may, I'll kick us off, and I have the easy job of introducing our team here. You all know Taylor Johnson, our Transit and Parking Program Manager, one of three members of our Transit staff who run a wonderful bus transit system on very little staff there. And then next to Taylor is Ryan Billings. We'll introduce, I think Taylor and Ryan will do a little introductions later. On the screen, we have Allison Bushwhack. I didn't make that pronunciation up. It actually is Bushwhack. Allison is in Kansas City. And over here, we have Kate Blackburn. These three people work for a company called HNTB. I have known HNTB, and Chris has known HNTB as a company that is in the engineering and planning business. They do lots of things. They're a multinational firm. They're everywhere around the world, I think. Ryan, these folks are in the Oklahoma City and Kansas City office, and they are here because they are microtransit experts. And we decided a few months ago that we needed experts to help guide us and guide you through this process. I want to read, "Council made an amendment to the FY23 budget," and I just, today I've pulled the minutes, and I just wanted to read what it said. It said, and this was actually Councilor Lynn making the motion, Councilor Holman seconding it, "I moved this public transportation fund allocations for Transit and Parking Administration to be increased by $750,000 this year to fund an on-demand turnkey microtransit program." That's why we're here, to get that process going. We've learned a lot about it, but we still needed experts to help us, and we're going to do kind of a workshop, interactive thing with you tonight, if you will allow us. We need you to tell us what you want. Microtransit can be lots of different things. There is no microtransit in Oklahoma, where you were probably the first one. There are other transit agencies thinking about it and working on it, but there is not one that we can just drive up and look at and see what they're doing. There aren't very many around the country, Ryan will explain that to you. So it's kind of a new concept, this on-demand transit, good idea, like everything else in our lives, everything is on-demand. But it's a little bit more complicated with transit, and there's lots of choices that you have. So we're here tonight to kind of break down those choices and get direction from you on what you want us to do in the way of this program, and we'd like to put that back together in a couple of months and bring it back to you, and then do it. Let's get the system running in 2023, hopefully, early 2023. So did I miss anything, Taylor? Okay, I'm going to hand you back to Taylor Johnson and Ryan Billings.
Thank you. And we'll go through some slides here in a minute, but I think it's important to note that Ryan and Kate are going to be taking notes in the background. We have this interactive whiteboard that we're going to circle back around to at the end of the presentation to put more notes and ideas into, but they are actively going to be taking down your ideas and discussion as we go through. So feel free to interject as necessary, but I'll let Ryan go through the agenda real quick.
Yeah, so thanks for that warm welcome, really appreciate it. You stole most of my thunder, that's okay. Ryan Billings, I am the project manager on the consultant side, HNTB, as mentioned. Kate, she is a recent graduate of OU Planning School, so really excited to have her helping us and supporting us. And Allison, of course, in Kansas City. We're excited to be here, we're excited to kick this off. I recently moved back to Norman after a 10-year stint in Denver. I worked for the city and county of Denver for the last decade, where I stood up and ran and managed a fairly large transit program for them. So I'm taking the skills that I learned there and bringing them back to Oklahoma, and trying to help the cities and agencies in Oklahoma with some of their transit issues. So excited to do that. As mentioned, really excited, a lot of opportunity here, had a lot of good conversations with Taylor about this over the last several months, and we're excited to kick this off. We're wanting to hear from you, that's why we're here, that's the whole point of this conversation, we want to get your feedback, your ideas, your thoughts, and apply it to ultimately what we decide over the next several months in terms of how it is applied and implemented. Real quick, on the agenda side, we're going to go through some service overview and existing conditions. Taylor's going to walk us through that, just kind of baselining everything once again, just for our own edification. I'm going to talk a little bit about project overview, where we're headed over the next couple of months, where we're at now, and what we're ultimately trying to accomplish. We have our microtransit overview. Allison in Kansas City is going to walk through kind of microtransit overall. I know a lot of you, based on watching a number of the previous work sessions, have a good understanding of generally what microtransit is, but again, we want to baseline everybody's knowledge, so we're all starting from one spot, so we're all thinking about this and having a good conversation about it today. Walk through a few case studies nationally, maybe some things that apply potentially here. We'll go into that mural discussion, virtual whiteboard discussion. As mentioned, we'll be tracking some of those comments, some of the nuggets that we hear as we're going along. Kate will be tracking those, putting them into the mural as we go, then we'll kind of talk through those. We also sent out a survey, as many of you know, a few weeks ago, got some good responses for that as well, and we'll be talking about those responses as well as those stuff that we hear today. And then we'll talk a little bit about next steps, where we're headed over the next couple of months and when we'll get to see you all again.
So we'll jump into the slides, and again, we don't want to sound overly preachy or anything, so please interrupt us if you have something, we want to capture every thought and idea we can. So going on to the service overview, again, just giving a baseline, what we do now, a lot of you have seen these slides, so I won't belabor the point too much, but we do operate a fixed route fare-free system Monday through Friday and on Saturdays since July 2019, when we took over the service from the university. The next map, slide, will show a map of the various routes, but we have 13 buses in our fixed route fleet. We actually have seven new on order through council support and approval, two 35-foot electric and five 35-foot CNG that will really do a lot to, we've been harping on the last three years, our fleet really needs to be overhauled, right, what we inherited from the university. So we have a lot of good buses on the way. And I'd just like to mention, that's not counting the local match, that's nearly $4 million in federal grants that we've been able to capture to fund these buses. So last three years, we've been very successful getting federal grants to match the local dollars that council has allocated for bus replacement. Last fiscal year, so we're talking July to June, we had 244,000 passengers on the fixed route buses, that's almost 29% increase over the previous year, which was a lot of COVID months with capacity restrictions, so a big gain, of course. But in this year, we're seeing more gradual increase, so year-to-date, July through September, we have just over 63,000 passengers with an average daily weekday of 911. Ridership per service hour, great metric to look at, so this is about on average how many people are on each bus per service hour when we're running. It's just over 13 people, and then the average Saturday is 375, just under 11 people per service hour. So really, really good, healthy ridership per service hour, we hope that increases over time, too.
I want to ask you a question, but I'm still trying. Sorry. Do you have, probably not here, but statistics of which ones are more frequent, where these riders usually are on the bus routes?
Yeah, so as Councilmember Holman likes to say at every council meeting, the CP&amp;T report that we go into in more detail has a lot, a lot more detail in it. And Lindsay East, as we know, the one that serves Lindsay up from Vicksburg and then back down 12th to Brooks is by far a heavily utilized route. I think last month, it did about 10,000 trips. So with, I don't have that in front of me right now, but we will have the next CP&amp;T meeting next Thursday and have a lot more information for you. And then here's that map again, five local routes, and then the two specialty routes, one at 144 that goes to the more Social Security Office twice a week. And the commuter route, while we don't actually operate it or fund it, Embark OKC has taken over the service of that, they took that over two years ago. We did share the operation at one point, but it was more efficient for them to take over, and they actually increased the trips from six to nine daily trips every day for that they go between Norman and Oklahoma City. So a great service there, and it's operated.
Which pickup, sorry?
We have one at the homeland at Robinson and 24th, and then they pick up at Panera and across the street there, Mitchell's Jewelry, and then they pick up at Webster and Main Downtown and then the Brook Street Transfer Station on campus. So going into paratransit, a lot of you know this, but fixed route service is, has to be complemented by paratransit service. It's for those that are unable to functionally ride the fixed route bus service due to a disabling condition, and it mirrors fixed route service for the most part. We have about the same number of buses in the paratransit fleet, about 15, and we actually have five new on order from that side as well, so that makes 13 total for a fleet of 28 that we have on order. So we're really, in the next 12 months, going to make a lot of gains in our fleet. Ridership, again, over the last fiscal year was increased greatly over, again, the COVID fiscal year, I like to call it, of 32% increase. And then this fiscal year-to-date, we're still seeing a pretty good increase of 20% over the first three months. Average daily, 89. You can see that ridership per service hour is 1.26, so we average one to two people on the bus per hour that we operate. That's why paratransit is very expensive per passenger, just because we can't get as many people on the vehicles as we can the fixed route. And then again, there's the explanation of who's eligible to receive the service, they have to submit an application, and we have just under 600 people that are actually enrolled in the service. They don't use it every day, some people use it every day, some people use it once a week, once a month, but, and some people just have it as a backup in case they need it. So we have, but we have quite a few people that were on our roles that could call on us to use that service. And this map on the next slide really shows that service boundary. So I mentioned the required part of paratransit, that bullseye on the left side of our boundaries is the three-quarters of mile as a crow flies. That's literally how it's written in regulation around a fixed route, that we're required to operate paratransit service. Again, it's a complement to fixed route for those that are unable to ride it. And then the purple is, of course, our city limits, and we actually offer a zone two, which is everything up to the city limits. Many cities do that as a, as a program for their citizens, and we're happy to do that. But as you can see, and as we've talked about before in other council meetings, 189 square miles is quite, quite the land area for a city our size, so.
Just, yeah, I appreciate you bringing that up, and just to, for the record, we're not required to provide this service to the entire city limits, just within distance of the fixed route system.
Right. Zone two is technically a premium service because it is not required, but again, many cities do do that.
But, and so anybody in the whole city limits of Norman right now can, could use that service?
And then I think I've talked a little bit too much on the current services, but I'll finish here at transit facilities and then our long-range plan. We have a great, brand-new, almost 20,000-square-foot facility on North Base at Flood and Goddard or Flood and Rock Creek. It costs about $7.5 million to build, we had a $5 million FTA grant, and then a mix of capital and public safety sales tax funded the rest. We do maintain fire trucks and buses out of this facility, they're pretty comparable in size, so we're happy to make that efficiencies. And then our transit operations staff are up there as well, our embark team as well as the city team. And then our downtown transit center is our newest transit facility that council authorized the purchase of in April of this year. We're currently using the Brook Street Transit Center. The bottom photo is 320 East Comanche, that property authorized us to purchase, that we're working with an architect right now to remodel into a transit center. So we're hoping to have the bid documents out in the next couple of months and really get to work on that. And that's a great segue into the next slide, which is our long-range plan. That downtown transit center is pivotal to us rearranging our routes and making it more user-friendly and operational-friendly. Like you can see there on the left side of the page, the routes that we're planning to implement, council just approved a public participation final process for that at the last meeting in September. So we're going out to public comments next month, have a couple of public hearings, and then back to council sometime in December to ask for your final approval for implementation of the route changes. But more bidirectional, people don't have to ride the loop all the way around, right? It's more A to B, for you to get to and from your destination, and it really sets us up for expansion later. The routes that we identified for expansion aren't on this slide, but there were identified adding routes and frequency and service periods in the long-range plan, and as funding is available, we'll be sure to come to council and recommend implementation of those. So again, I'm going to end the service overview and pass it on to Ryan.
About the public meetings that we're going to have on the Go Norman Transit Plan and the changing of the routes, if we get feedback that this is not what the community wants, will there be changes potentially made to these routes?
Potentially. Again, this is an adopted plan by council, it's already kind of gone through a year, 11-month public participation process with dialogue included with council. So really, this is just kind of a double check, and we'll evaluate that feedback and come back to you with a final request for approval. So we feel really strongly about these routes. I think we've talked about a couple spaces where they could wiggle a little bit if we need to, but again, as a part of the long-range plan, we feel really confident that these are the routes we should move forward with.
All right. One of the first things I did.
Yeah, I just wanted to ask, because you said that this is, we've been talking about it for 11 months, and there's some things that you brought back to us that we had some consensus on, which I know we did have a little bit, but there was a lot of things that Councilmember Holman and I were concerned about with the lack of routes on the east side of town, with some of the routes being moved. So have you made some adjustments to those?
Lack of routes, well, so more of that bidirectional service again. Allison, if you could go back a slide, please. Yeah, we previously operated on, you can see there, the 111 going outbound on Lindsay and then inbound on Brooks. And again, to really achieve that efficiency of people being able to know where bus stops are more avail, and be able to take the bus to and from their destination, there kind of had to be some trade-offs. We talked about that in a few past meetings, and we identified Lindsay as being the better alternative over, over Brooks, I believe. And then that, that same trade-off further to the east of going up Brandywine rather than Biloxi, we, that was purposeful because we, the Creekside stops for those apartments, we could still service them along Lindsay Street, as well as still get the majority of people that were on that Biloxi route. And in my public hearing process, I'll show a walk shed map, so a quarter of a mile, it's about five to 10 minutes, what people are normally willing to walk, and you'll, people will be able to see that it's really within walking distance, most of the areas that we proposed to move, but we did talk about that.
I will wait to see it, because I know we talked about it, but I also remember the conversation that you were going to go back and look at some alternative routes. So if that wasn't done, and you're just going to present to us what you showed us previously with additional walking routes, I'm going to wait and see, but I don't know that that's necessarily going to be something that I'm going to be satisfied with normal people in my ward, but I'll just wait to, to have that conversation a little bit more once I kind of see what you're talking about.
And that's exactly why we have the public meetings and the public feedback, so.
Right. Okay. So one of the first things I did when I came back to Norman was look, and look at the transit system, look if there's a plan in place, there was one in motion, really excited about that. Next slide, please. And then I heard about the microtransit opportunity, so we've got this kind of mix, right? We've got an adopted plan in place with improvements to service hours, et cetera, maybe not perfect, but definitely an improvement to what was out there previously. We've got a paratransit system in place, and we've got this idea for microtransit. So what we're trying to accomplish here today is, how does that all work together? How do we, how do we maintain a really useful, and to be quite honest, used system, fixed route system and paratransit system, and complement it with a, a on-demand microtransit service that can help maybe fill some of those holes and some of those gaps? And that's what we're kind of trying to do with this particular effort. And specifically, we're looking at kind of a multi-month process, next slide, please, that is going to get to that, hopefully, that recommendation. So we're in this first piece, this is the discovery phase, and this is multi-parts. We've spent several weeks reviewing past council meetings, getting an idea of what you guys are all thinking about already. We've had numerous conversations with Taylor and staff about some of their expectations. We've been looking at existing conditions and trying to just get a better understanding of what the need and whether or not microtransit is a potential solution for that need. After we come out of this meeting and subsequent conversations with Taylor and staff, we're going to start an analysis phase, right? So we're going to take the existing conditions, feedback we get here tonight, feedback we've already gotten from the City of Norman staff, and start to think about what are those recommendations? What are those alternatives from a microtransit standpoint that might make sense for the City of Norman? Then we'll be back in roughly a month and a half, six to eight weeks, to this group, have another conversation about those recommendations, kind of an opportunity to get that feedback, immediate feedback from you all, and then we move into, hopefully, implementation. If we can get consensus, at least enough consensus to move forward, we're going to be supporting you all as you develop an RFP to go out and to industry and let them respond to that RFP based on the fact that this is what we think we want, and, and this is our budget, and that's how that'll move forward. Any questions about kind of that process and overview? Okay. Allison?
Hopefully, all of you had a chance to take a look at the two-page that was provided in the board packet. I'm going to now walk us through an overview of microtransit, so similar to what was provided in that two-page, but I'm going to go into a little bit more detail again, so we're all talking with the same language as we consider alternatives we want to develop for this process. So what is microtransit? My favorite way of describing it to people is that it's the transit agency version of Uber and Lyft service. It's offering the convenience of on-demand rides, but with the additional service standards that we want to adhere to as, as public servants, so making sure that rides are affordable to our passengers and making sure that service is allocated in an equitable manner. Looking at the potential vehicles that can be provided in this service, this is sort of what is most visible in the community and what will appeal to potential passengers. The vehicles can really range in size and can accommodate wheelchairs and other mobility devices. So the largest can sort of be on that sort of cutaway shuttle end, but as small as an individual car, and also advanced sizes. So this is nice because they're smaller and more nimble, and sort of fit into some more suburban or fringe urbanized area context in those road patterns that might be a little bit more difficult for a full-size bus. The other major thing that would be seen by your riding public is the passenger app, so smartphone app that allows them to request a ride. Again, this would be similar to existing apps you may have seen or experienced with Uber and Lyft. You make a request for a ride through the app, and it gets crunched in some software behind the scenes and spits out a predicted pickup time and drop-off time, and information about your driver and the vehicle, as well as any other passengers that might be sharing a ride with you if you elect to have pulled rides as part of your service. The other feature of microtransit offered by public agencies is a little bit different from Uber and Lyft, is that we would also want to or encourage offering a call-in option to your agency to go ahead and put this information on behalf of riders that have either seeing and or hearing impairments or just otherwise don't have access to it now. So when you go out for an RFP, you'll be looking at many vendors that are out there today, and at the, at a minimum, they're going to be providing three basic components. That's the passenger app that we just talked through, the driver app that lets vehicle drivers know where they need to go and how to provide their end of service, and then there's the back office administration, and this is typically a dashboard so that someone on your team can be observing in real time what's happening out, out in your community with the vehicles, and also has some reporting capability so you can be consuming reports that let you know different service metrics and performance standards. So this slide I wanted to share because it's talking about microtransit and how it's typically designed for service, and that's really zone-based service. So when we recommend a microtransit pilot, we might be defining this geographic zone in which requests can be made for rides within that zone, both from the starting end and the drop-off end. So in the left side of the screen, you're seeing that's all contained in one zone, and usually in microtransit pilots, that might be as small as a few square miles for a pilot to test out service in the beginning, before it might be expanded to other zones or expanding the zone, depending on how the service is taken up by the general public. On the right side of the screen, the difference here is having all of the starting locations within the zone, but having a high-demand drop-off location such as a transit hub that might be many miles away, so that can be identified as a drop-off. This next slide is talking about sort of a hybrid approach between fixed route and microtransit, so this would allow a microtransit vehicle to travel along a predetermined or fixed route that's published in a schedule similar to your existing fixed routes today, but then this vehicle would be allowed to deviate from that fixed route depending on any high-demand stops during the day, such as schools getting out at a certain time or a large employer having a shift change at a certain time, and then in addition to that, allowing for some other pickup or drop-offs based on. Another microtransit concept we wanted to talk to is the service standard regarding how close to the passenger the vehicle can get in terms of convenience for picking up and dropping off. So on the left side of the screen, this is sort of the more convenient but less efficient in terms of routing, picking up individuals right outside their homes or right outside their destination. And the difference between curb-to-curb and door-to-door is that for our purposes, we think of door-to-door as more paratransit service, which can absolutely have microtransit software integrated into. But really, we would just want to differentiate that terminology. When we say door-to-door, that's really a vehicle operator assisting the individual who needs it to get from the door to the vehicle. On the right side of the screen is the concept of a pickup and pickup location and drop-off location, where passengers may be asked to walk five minutes or so to get to a pickup location, and this allows for a little bit more efficiency on the routing side for the microtransit vehicle. And that can have an impact overall on the number of vehicles you would, you would want So there's several different operating models, and this gets into sort of the cost discussion. And so we wanted to talk about the different ways in which you could contract for a microtransit service, because this can ultimately determine the cost for the agency. But starting on the left side of the spectrum is where we have the most public responsibility or costs being attributed to the public agency. So in this contract, you would have public agency providing both their own vehicles and their own staff to operate them, and only contracting for that microtransit or on-demand software. The next phase of that would be layering in the drivers or pushing the driver aspect of this into the private sector into your contract. And then third is the, what we like to refer to as the turnkey option, so really, the agency is just managing or administering the program, but the, the software, the vehicles and operators are all contracted from the vendor. And then the last option on the far right, we call the taxi model, and this is only an option in urban contexts where you have an existing base of taxi drivers. So this would be contracting your microtransit software, but all of your drivers and vehicles are sort of out there, free-range, independent drivers that would be available for hire. Okay, there are a couple of points I wanted to share from this study that was developed by TCRP back in 2019. It kind of demonstrates the variety, or I should say, range of costs for, or costs per vehicle service hour, and this gets at, again, sort of. And this gets at, again, sort of how all of the different operating models can determine what the cost looks like to the public agency. So in terms of cash you're paying to the vendor, that can really range depending on how much you're asking of them in your services. The costs are lower if you're offering more in-house, let's say you're using your own vehicles and maintenance and fuel. And then on the higher end, I think the highest one shown is AC Transit, and they've noted that their cost they've established is fully allocated. So they're attributing their administrative time to this hourly.
Councilmember.
Allison, hold up a second.
I just want to ask a quick question while we've got this screen up. Can you tell us on record what the cost is right now per passenger trip for our in-bark system?
It changes based on how many passengers we have for the fiscal year and comparing it to fiscal year and fiscal year. But generally, I think the last time I reported it to you all, we had around, it was around $10 per passenger for fixed route. And then, again, like I said earlier, paratransit's much more expensive, so we tend to pull those riders out and the cost. And it usually is up around $70 or $80 per passenger.
Oh, I don't know where I was getting like $34 or $36 from. I thought that was...
That's if you, if you put it all together, paratransit and fixed route, and just divide all the passengers by the cost, it kind of makes that median number.
Gotcha.
But, yeah.
But the regular, outside of paratransit, it's $10, and then paratransit's roughly $70.
Yeah, $70, $80, around that number.
Thank you.
Councilmember.
I have a question on this, and maybe I'm looking at this, maybe it's 2019, because the one I looked at to even get on this, I don't see that one on here, and I'm wondering what the via. I don't see it as one that has... These are just city ones, how they're doing it for the house. I'd just like to see if, how much one of those services is, because I have emails that the price was much, much different. But I guess it depends on the model and how you're doing it, how you're charging fares or if you're going to not charge fares or cover some of the fares.
Right, and that BIA model, I think in Arlington specifically, that would be one of those contracted services that you see on here that it's, you know, the city doesn't do anything except pay a check to BIA to operate the service, right? So as you can see on here, that it would be similar to some of those you see on this chart, but it could range from, you know, $46 I see from DART doing theirs contracted, except they provide the vehicles and facilities, to NCTD, it's $97 per vehicle service hour, right? So it depends on what you want to offer in terms of amenities, I like to call them. So are you going to wait 12 minutes or 30 minutes or an hour for your trip? Those types of levers you can pull.
Okay.
But it would be similar on here. It just wasn't included in this specific report that HNTV pulled.
Okay, thank you very much.
Councilmember Grant.
Yeah, just one additional data point, not in this report because it's from our own company's experience working in Baton Rouge and Denver. In the last year, the cost per vehicle hour for turnkey service, which is still this option, paying the contractor to do everything and the agency's just administering, that cost range was about $70 to $80 per vehicle hour.
Councilmember Grant, where are you at?
Who is TDU? And it looks like they do contracted in-house. It looks like they have the lowest cost per service hour and the highest passenger-per-vehicle service hour. And I'm curious how they accomplish that.
Yeah, I don't have details on me with the specific experience with each of these. That's something we can certainly look into further. But yeah, I would just reiterate, these are all, these are first of all self-reported, which I've worked with NTD data before, and it's, there's a lot of interpretation by the agency reporting out what their costs are. So I think that accounts for some of this variability. But yeah, we would need to find out from TDU what it is they're doing in-house because that could be absorbing a lot of the costs and they might not be including that in this sort of like cash they're paying the vendor. They might just be reporting that amount. So probably the real cost, if they were to account for everything they do in-house and their on-staff time, I would guess that $34 would go up.
And we do have some case studies in just a few minutes on some other slides, but we can definitely look into TDU more closely and see what the...
Who are they again? What does it stand for?
Allison, do you know what TDU stands for?
No, not off the top of my head.
Yeah, again, this was just meant to be a chart to show you could, the operating model can range across the spectrum as well as the cost. And depending on, again, what levers you pull and who does what, the cost can really be driven by all those things.
They almost have like five people per hour, so I was wondering what vehicles and how they're running things, so.
Yep.
Yeah, so that brings me to my other point I wanted to make. What is consistent in this chart is the passengers-per-vehicle service hour. Microtransit really fits well in that two to five passenger range per vehicle is what is, what it is best able to accommodate. And getting beyond that five per vehicle, you're either talking about adding more vehicles into service and paying for those, or starting to consider the efficiency that fixed route. So this is, we kind of started getting into this conversation on the last slide, but based on how we break down the metrics that we're looking at, each type of service can appear to have efficiencies over another. So the per-vehicle costs for fixed route service are typically higher in the range of 100 to 140 an hour, which I believe your agency fits into that range. But the cost per passenger is lower because your fixed route averages 10 to 30 passengers per hour. The on-demand service has a lower cost per vehicle hour, but you have a higher cost per passenger per trip because you're just serving fewer people.
Councilmember.
So before we...
Sure.
Sorry, I know there's a lot of variables that go into this table and everything, but were there any kind of like...
Oh, I'm sorry.
Customer satisfaction surveys that went along with this? Like, can you tease out which is the most efficient or provides the most bang for your buck model?
Yeah, I think, again, I think what we'll learn from this work session and then we'll figure out what direction to go, what operating model we kind of want to, or what's the goal of council? What do we want to do with the service? And then we'll kind of look at what operating model best fits with what we're currently doing and what we could contract out or absorb, so.
I figured that was probably the answer. Thank you.
Okay, so we just have a couple more slides before we go over a couple of case studies. But sort of summary of what I've gone over so far, I hope that one of the central ideas for microtransit service is that it can better serve a low-demand area or a small, distinct market. So the total cost of microtransit service can be similar to a fixed route service, but it's really about providing better value where market size is limited and might not be as efficiently served by fixed route because you have lower demand. Last, before the case studies, this is some points that were developed by Transit Center, which is an industry organization that they have been tracking and studying microtransit since they've been implemented across U.S. over the last several years. So some of the things they point out, I wanted to bring to your attention because I think microtransit is new and exciting and can often be taken up or perceived as a cure-all for transit service. But I really want to encourage or think about how you guys have a great fixed route system already and how microtransit service can be piloted to see if it's a good complement to fixed route. So the microtransit has a productivity problem, but it's demand-based and less efficient and more expensive per passenger. And then as demand goes up, there's a temptation to add vehicles to service and continue investing in that microtransit service. However, that could lead to inequitable allocation of services if you're putting more dollars toward a specific market in your community. There's some opportunity costs, so it does serve fewer people. The funding could benefit more people through improvement of existing fixed route service, improving stations and amenities that you have done recently that Taylor talked about, or improving pedestrian access. So you could gain more ridership if there are better pedestrian amenities within that half-mile to mile, I should say quarter-mile to half-mile walk shed, that five to 10-minute walk that typically attracts riders. Microtransit can serve other roles, so we've talked about applying that to low-productivity markets. So if you have existing fixed route times or time periods on the fixed route service that is below that five passengers per hour threshold, that might be a potential application for microtransit. And then it could be introduced in locations in Norman where fixed route service doesn't even exist, but could attract that two to five passengers per hour. Lastly, you have your paratransit service and microtransit software could be implemented to improve the quality of that service, so not having to have way advanced notice in order to secure your paratransit ride. Okay, so I will talk to case studies next. And the intention of these case studies, we picked them based on, some are peers in terms of similarity to the population and setup of Norman. Others, we've heard comments from your surveys or previous council workshops that we just thought would be a good compare/contrast to what could be offered in Norman. And I'm going to try to go through these quickly because Kate just notified me, I have 20 minutes left, thank you, Kate. Okay, so in Arlington, they replaced their transit service with microtransit service entirely, so one-to-one. They have fares of $3 to $5, and they have pickup within two blocks and average wait time of 12 minutes. So that sounds pretty good. However, what I would call is different from the Norman context is that they replaced only one bus route. So they did not have sort of a legacy system that you have. So that's just lesser demand or fewer travel patterns to fulfill with the service.
I will, I will...
They also...
Real quick, no, you're good. I will also note that they have 53 vehicles and they're about to expand to somewhere around 68. I mean, that's a huge, huge, huge system that they're running there. Get a lot of efficiencies from a standpoint of how much they're paying per vehicle service hour, et cetera. It's a very large system, but we wanted to make sure we shared that with you because we had heard that you guys had had a little bit of experience there. We wanted to make sure that we had a level playing field in terms of comparing that to this particular opportunity.
Councilmember.
Do you know what the City of Arlington is paying for that service?
I think the last time I asked them, and I reported to council at the last meeting that we talked about this before this one, was 8.3 million for the contract with VIA. But that was probably before the expansion that Ryan speaks about.
Fifty-something vehicles?
Probably less vehicles in terms of that timing, but similar-ish, I'd say probably somewhere around there.
Again, that was a year and a half ago or so, so we'd have to go back and re...
Do we have, do we have any idea, I know we're looking at this, but any guess of how many vehicles that we're even talking about putting in Norman on this pilot?
Well, and that's, that's the cost driven that we're talking about. So once we figure out what we want, we'll be able to figure out what we can buy with the pilot.
I would say we can assume somewhere in the neighborhood of two to five, depending on kind of a lot of things. The geography, what we want in terms of our goal for our response time, a lot of other things, and then obviously the biggest piece of that is going to be the budget. So we're talking about, you know, an order of magnitude smaller than what they're dealing with there. We have a meeting with them scheduled to get a little bit better understanding of exactly how they operate because we're really fascinated how they are able to get so efficient with some of this, but we weren't able to do that before this meeting.
Thank you.
Yep.
So next case study is in Nebraska. We thought this was a good comparable to Norman in terms of population size. Both our college towns have similarly sized fixed route systems and paratransit with the desire to move to on-demand service. And there, Lincoln has figured out a way to offer microtransit, both as its own service but also applied microtransit to its paratransit service. They offer this, they have pretty good time period and coverage or service hours they offer, and they only have trips booked through the smartphone app. And then lastly, they have no guaranteed wait time and have same-day-only reservations. So this is just to show this has been implied as a complement to fixed route transit. When we talk about some of those trade-offs to control costs, it looks like in this case study, they have sort of done a trade-off of guaranteed wait time. So passenger might request a ride but not get a ride within like 15 or 20 minutes, it could be an hour or longer.
And I will say, with this example, if we were using the same fleet and possibly the same drivers, we weren't necessarily contracting out except for the software, we'd have to consider the cost to collect that fare. And maybe it's just through the app, which diminishes that cost, but we're currently not collecting a fare. And that was a conscious decision with the long-range plan when we did the fare analysis. It just didn't make sense capital-wise to invest in that. So just another cost to consider if we decide to implement a fare and how we collect that, how we collect that funding.
Our last example is in Pinellas County, Florida, and this is the TD stands for Transportation Advantage Late Shift Program. This one we included because so far we've talked about zone-based service, so having service in a geographic area of your town. This one is based on not a geographic area, but eligibility criteria, so they're targeting low-income individuals that work late-night shifts. So this is a way to offer a different, discreet market of people with this service to improve their experience for the same cost of what it would have been to keep fixed route service late at night. The service in particular is state-funded.
And I'll say too, along the same lines with a service like this, a pilot program could be, maybe Saturday or Sunday service is piloted as on-demand instead of the fixed route service we currently provide. There's, again, a menu of options we could do with this funding and pilot program, so again, kind of everything's on the table. Like this, this program right here, it's a really good idea if you want to target those late-shift workers and get them to and from where they need to go, because we have people working at all times of the day, right?
Okay, now I'm going to hand it back to Ryan to get us started on our real exercise. I'm going to get that pulled up.
I just wanted to piggyback a little bit off what you're talking about with, I do agree that, I feel like right now with our current system, the average citizen can get a ride if they need one, whether that's through in-bark, whether that's through Uber, Lyft, whatever, taxi. But later at night, those services are more difficult to get because there's fewer drivers, fewer Ubers out on the road, in-bark stop services at a certain time, so we don't have any services for after-hour workers as well as paratransit after-hour services. So that, to me, for this particular exercise, my three biggest things that I have on here are wheelchair, after-hours, and out east, because I know there's a lot of people past or on East Side Highway 9 and even just East Side going down Alameda that would like to get into town and can't. They've got teenagers that want to come work and they can't, so.
And that's exactly the feedback we need from you all, you know? What, what are you guys looking for? Thank you. And again, I think Allison's about to pull up the whiteboard for a visual, but we've taken the survey results that you gave us a week or so ago and put those into this board. And then as you have provided feedback so far tonight, we've been placing in here. So this is just, again, a discussion we can have and try to throw things, see what sticks, and we'll digest it and come back to you in a few weeks, so.
Councilmember.
Something I would like to know when you're discussing, if it's with VIA or somebody else, if they do have it where, and however we go, if we do charge, if it's like the $3 for a ride, or if you could, I know that VIA had a program where they had like $45 a week was an unlimited, four rides a day per week, and that was through Saturday. If they had something like that, if they did come in and whatever we figured out was an income qualification, and then maybe the city provide ones that are in that threshold a path... a pass, anything above that pass, they'd have to be responsible for. But then also I don't think it's too much to ask, like if I use this or somebody else use this, if it was a small fee, if they're not in that income. And then also if that fee, if it reduces what we, if it goes to the city or if it can just reduce the amount of the contract, however that works, I, I'd like to know how they're doing that. If like they had that $8 million budget in Arlington, but they're charging $3 to $5 a trip or whatever that's in the zones. When I read it was, it been capped out close to $5. Which is not unreasonable for a ride in the city. I know it's cheaper than an Uber or anything like that, but they did have those passes. But if, if all that offsets the contract amount, I'm wondering, or if that revenue comes to the city, I don't know how that works.
Well, it's probably one, it, it's the same outcome. If the revenue comes directly to the city, then it, in a roundabout way, probably.
Well, I'm just saying if it came that we didn't, if we eliminated a step.
Right.
We're like, okay, all this came in through us and then we have to.
But I can probably say confidently, it's not paying for the service, right? So again, the fare while it will offset it somewhat is, it's the, the goal of a transit agency isn't necessarily to, some transit agencies will make a fare goal, like they want 8% or 10% of their operating costs covered by fare. But at the end of the day, it's not going to cover everything. So it's just another lever to pull. What, do we charge it by mile? I think Arlington actually charges, you know, mile one to three is this much and three to five is this much. And it just kind of gradually gets bigger. So we'll take that into consideration about the income.
So as mentioned earlier, we sent out a survey. We got some good responses. We don't have a ton of time to go through everything, but we wanted to make sure that we captured as much as we could in this meeting based on kind of a desire to, to get through the survey piece. So I'm going to read out this question. I'm going to try to get folks to respond if there's anything that we're missing here. We'd love to know that. So how would Norman residents benefit from a potential microtransit pilot? We've already got some good responses. Is there anything else that you would like to add now so we have this as we're moving forward? Anything that we're missing? So far we have.
Yeah, I think I got my survey in late, but one of the things I mentioned in mine was more people riding public transit, the less traffic on the streets causing congestion is a way for all Norman residents to benefit, even if they don't ride it. Less congestion and less wear and tear potentially on the streets. So they last a little bit longer, so potential savings cost-wise for maintenanceing streets and things.
Okay, that's a good one. Any other thoughts on this particular question?
Well, there's a lot of ease that can come to a lot of persons, particularly those who are chair-bound or anything else, to being able to get to a doctor, to be able to get to the things that they need just to have life. And sometimes their vehicles break down. We had that with a friend of ours the other day and so.
I'm just thinking about the way that our current paratransit system works is that you have to schedule in advance. And so I would say, I mean, I don't, sorry, I wasn't reading exactly, but like ease of finding rides like day of service where you don't have to schedule it in advance. So flexibility in that.
That's a, that's a really important point, right? The, the app-based services that we're talking about here, whether they're paratransit or microtransit focused, the ability to, to dial up through smartphone or even a call, very similar to Lyft and Uber is huge, right? Not all trips can be thought through throughout a week and have access to immediately, right? And if it's not available or there's a lot of demand at that particular time or whatever, that puts people in a little bit of a pinch. And having that access, you know, within the 20 minutes of maybe the idea is, is a pretty, pretty beneficial opportunity.
Similarly along those lines, what council member Studley alluded to earlier, just the providing a level of service when outside the hours of, you know, normal service, I think, yeah, two in the morning is probably a, in a college town, a pretty high traffic time. So, you know, I'm not sure the buses run at 2:00 AM and I'm not sure how many Ubers are still left on the street at that point, but I think that's huge. And then the council member Holman's point, just less demand on auto infrastructure in general, less need for parking at places, you know, less need for dedicated, all the things that come along with having everybody driving their own individual cars somewhere. You can actually start to like make your buildings closer together. You can increase density. You can do a lot of things that impact the city beyond just bus rides.
So we'll move on to the second question real quick. We're quickly running out of time. I don't want to be respectful of everybody's time.
And we could also resend out the survey link and for those that haven't been able to, but.
Absolutely. We'll resend that out here in the next week and we can get more responses. So question two in the survey was what kind of service do you envision and what problems will be solved? That's a very big question, very open-ended. We've captured some good stuff so far. We've heard some good stuff today. Anything else we want to add to this real quick?
And I think we've heard the on-demand piece is obviously critical. That's kind of the, the, the end goal, I think for a lot of people.
Councilmember Foreman?
I guess my thing would be like, I hate to say Uber, you know, like can we call it Sooner, right? Uber, right? We have to have a good name for it. But just having that on-demand and like, I would like to see it 24/7. Like, and I think we offer it on the weekends because people still have jobs, you know, people still have to get groceries and stuff. So just a more on-demand, like you said, like two to five vehicles. And I'm like, I'd like to see more than that. You know, it's college town, we're going SEC, like, I mean, things are changing. So yeah, I'd like 24/7. And I think that would help a lot of people out. Sometimes you need a taco at midnight, you know? And you can't walk there.
Sorry. I, I think 24/7, if somebody implemented parent or microtransit to its full extent, that's probably the, the end goal. But again, pilot program, right? We want to make sure that we're in the constraints of the budgets that council set and we can really study how this pilot goes and.
But wouldn't it be important to know that pilot at two at night? Have one going at night, just to see.
And maybe we go up to two, but anyways, 24/7 is probably a little bit outside, I'm just speculating outside the budget, but we'll look into it too.
We'll find them.
That's a good idea. That's what I'm saying.
I'm going to say this, have to say it. Did you watch the video of Richard Anderson driving himself home in the rain on Sunday at midnight because there was no ride? Did you see that by chance?
I did not.
Okay. So that's one of the things that I really want this service to solve is for people like that, is they're at the doctor, that they don't have to have someone following them home with their headlights on so that they can see.
No, that's, that's exactly what we're here for. So that's good.
Yeah. So 24/7.
And maybe we'll just slide down to the last two questions and take them both at the same time for the sake of time. But again, what, which locations or markets in Norman would best be served? These are the, the things we've heard so far. And how did the pandemic impact the rider market? Just trying to get your perspective on what you feel.
Mine are on there for the purple side there. The, how did the pandemic impact the rider market? I think maybe at first I thought people might not want to ride public transit anymore because of fear of being around other people. But in another way, it's actually for economic reasons, more people may need public transit now than before due to the affordability of, or lack of affordability with owning a vehicle. The cost of owning a car, insurance, maintenance.
Yeah.
I mean, my 99 pickup truck, to get the AC stopped working in July. And so to get it fixed was going to cost over $1,000. It's a 23-year-old truck. Like $1,000 to get the AC fixed. So you just don't have AC and, uh, cause I mean, $1,000. It's like a percent of buying just a brand new car though. And so most people that ride public transit probably don't have a thousand bucks lying around for that. So I could see a lot more people needing public transit because they just can't afford to own a car anymore, along with rising rents and food and all those things that people say, well, what am, what am I going to cut? Well, the bus in Norman's free, so I'll ride that because we'll just park the car in driveway. So that's one way I've seen that it, the pandemic could have, could and maybe has potentially increased certain sectors of ridership in public transit for those reasons.
And to that point, the need to necessarily commute long distances to get to your job is no longer a thing with remote workers and everything. So I, you know, there might be more people, again, more, a bigger appetite for this kind of service, you know, now that I don't need my car to drive 45 minutes to Oklahoma City to get to my job downtown or whatever. It's just, you know, I can rely on the, the once a day or the, however many trips this service provides.
I was also going to mention for you, Elizabeth, that the, the regional transits moniker or name is actually Taco. Cause it's the transportation authority of central Oklahoma.
No, it's not. It's because people want tacos.
Our Taco.
Think of the amazing market.
Regional transportation authority of central Oklahoma.
But they say.
They've got Dart and Bart and we'll have tacos.
I should have mentioned that in the existing service and what we're planning, the regional transit authority, that's something we could potentially be seeing a lot of people get off these trains and we're going to need the service there to move people efficiently. So it could involve microtransit, but we're actively, as the RTA moves further along, we'll be considering bus route changes for that as well.
On the locations or markets served, I think, you know, thinking about like our transit hub as somewhere that goes because like bringing people into, and the complement of our fixed route system, being able to get them from places where they, they are not along a fixed route, but then to get them to a place where they can get on the fixed route system and move about the city.
Yep.
I think that will be an important location.
And one service model we've seen, similar to council member Studley's point of the people out east, maybe, I think there's a New Jersey transit system that people can ride into the fixed route service area and then ride around, they can't ride around it on the microtransit, right? But then they can ride back out to their home or wherever they came from. So it's kind of a, yeah, to your point, you can feed the fixed route service, people can use that to get around once they get in, but then they, then they can get back out, so.
I think it's interesting that the west side of Norman isn't on here when we talked about that's where everybody buses to to work. And then a lot of times they get off work and there may not be a bus to get back home. So I think it's interesting that west side is not on there when that's when everyone works.
Well, and this is based on what you all have told us through the survey we sent out to you in this discussion we've had right now. It's not necessarily what Ryan and Taylor think. It's just solely what we've heard.
I think it's interesting that we're not looking and thinking of overall what happens after people get off the bus. How do you get back home once you get to work?
Right.
If you're in that kind of industry that gets off later.
And I, I think to be respectful of your guys' time, I know you have a second topic tonight. I think it will be good once, now that we've had this discussion, we've put some more things on the board, we'll resend out that survey. So I think even if you've already filled it out, please respond again now that you've had a little bit more time to digest after the presentation. And I think that'll really make a more robust path for us going forward. And just Allison, if you can go back to the presentation for the next step slide, I think we'll try to end there real quick. Now she's pulling that up if we can answer.
Yeah, just really just a comment about the ongoing discussions that we've been having about microtransit and what this might look like for the city of Norman. Personally, I think that this was really helpful for us to think and like have a better overview of exactly what microtransit is. Cause I think we've been talking at something that we haven't had a baseline for. And so just having a foundational understanding of like, what do the zones look like? How are other, you know, cities doing this instead of us trying to like pool information or like try to find stuff and someone says something in a meeting? So I feel like we're finally getting to the right path of like what we want to do and kind of honing in on the things that are going to service Norman in the appropriate way. So I really appreciate the work.
That's a perfect summary of what we're trying to do is, you know, we have this budget now, we have all the, we've heard through many meetings and many discussions what, what people want this to be. And there's a lot of perspectives and a lot of options, honestly. So we funnel it down into a, a pilot program we can implement, study, and then, you know, possibly expand or look at something else. Maybe it didn't work out like we thought it would. So the next step slide.
No, that's a perfect segue. We've got kind of that alternative analysis phase that has already kind of begun a little bit in the background, some existing conditions analysis, et cetera. That'll last for the next two months. We will be back to you all, like I mentioned earlier, probably in the next six, seven weeks. We're kind of shooting for late November, early December sometime.
We'll be getting with Brenda to try to schedule that.
We want to make sure we're coming to you all with those recommendations that we have. So we want to make sure that analysis is, is right, come back to you, get your feedback on that and then move forward. So we will be providing workshop summary for this and we'll provide a workshop summary after that second meeting. And then, and then it's kind of developing that, that implementation plan, setting the goals, setting the response times, understanding the budget and what that gets us. And then, you know, ultimately figuring out kind of, is it going to be zone-based? What is it going to look like, et cetera, et cetera? That'll happen towards the end of the year. And then, you know, hopefully fingers crossed, we move forward with, you know, the RFP and getting somebody brought on next year.
Well, thank you for this information. It helps guide our thoughts quite a bit and get us down the same line. I had a whole different idea of what microtransit was. And so now I don't.
And we'll definitely resend out that link. Again, I, even if you've already filled it out, please send it back and we'll take that into account. We'll send it out tomorrow.
Taco Uber.
Our Taco.
Funny thing is.
Thank you, sir. Thanks, guys.
Taco and squid.
Thank you.
Thanks, Allison.
They're great. They're just wonderful.
Hey, Elizabeth.
Oh, no. Taco crock. A bunch of Taco Rico. It was sitting in there.
Gourmet.
Yes, the tilado.
Cheaper. Cheaper than lettuce.
Two for four, two for five.
I don't watch it on TV. But you go there and you're like, look at this. I'm making notes.
Yeah, but it's right, the taco truck outside.
No, I believe that. It's raining.
It's raining.
It's raining. It's raining. It's raining. It's raining. It's raining. It's raining. It's raining. It's raining. It's raining. It's raining. It's raining. It's raining. It's raining. It's raining. It's raining. It's raining. I've only been to one, it's about a year ago. It's interesting that Popeyes doesn't have a, about that competition that doesn't have to pay for parking and maintenance and everything else.
I promise you, I didn't get money for my taco truck.
Yep. Just to keep, yeah.
We're still lying.
Well, because the customers. Starting the agenda, item number two, discussion regarding city council meeting processes and decorum. Catherine is working on her.
Thank you.
Catherine is passing out a memo and this is not on your, attached to your iPads because Catherine and I were both out of the office last week and she was working on this right up to the last minute this afternoon. And so I will attach it and push it back out tomorrow so you'll have it available to refer back to from this point forward. So we're going to kind of tag team this as we go through this, but Catherine's going to kick us off.
Okay. So I tried to pull together all of the resolutions, ordinances, charter provisions, based on a number of questions we've received in the last couple of weeks. And you'll see that starting on page six. I just summarized each provision for ease of reading. And then I tried to go through all the questions that we've heard over the last couple of weeks and how those policies and ordinances impact that discussion. So we've had questions off and on over the years really about council decorum at meetings. Council adopted a resolution back in 2005 that set forth house rules for the conduct of council meetings. And you'll see those on the big screen before every council meeting for the attendees as well. And it basically says the chambers are a place of business, appropriate attire, behavior and attention to business are expected. And then it gives specific rules for conduct. So keep each other informed, focus on the issue, don't attack anyone personally, treat people with respect, be honest and. that provision. And then we have some city code provisions, just generally, the presiding officer is charged with preserving decorum at all meetings. And then, within the ethics ordinance, it says members of council shall conduct themselves as to bring credit upon the city, setting an example of good and ethical conduct for all citizens of the community. We often get questions about parliamentary procedure. We follow Robert's Rules of Order, specifically the 10th edition, which I think was published maybe in 2000, 2001. But there are some exceptions in the code and I didn't go through that in the memo, but they're attached in the summary. But generally speaking, the presiding officer chairs the meeting and answers all questions concerning the application and interpretation of Robert's Rules. Brenda, of course, is a certified parliamentarian, so she's always been helpful on those provisions. And then, just generally, a council member wishing to speak should be recognized prior to speaking. Then all questions should be directed through the chair and not at one another. Council announcements. For many years, we have identified an item for council announcements and we used to call it council comments, but we had concerns that comments was a little bit misleading because it was really intended to be announcements. And we didn't want to get into points of discussion that council should be discussing on an agenda. So we switched that to announcements a couple of years ago and those should be used for announcements about events in the city, ward meetings, and not as a platform to discuss things that really should be discussed by the full council or to attack one another in violation of the House rules. The consent docket. I understand we had a question last Tuesday about the consent docket. This is a very common practice across the state and even across the nation. Typically, this is a business that's fairly routine where we anticipate unanimous consent of council. And you can see there how it's described on our agenda each meeting. This has been the language for many years, at least since I started and I believe long before that. So it says, "These items are placed on the agenda so city council by unanimous consent can designate those routine agenda items they wish to be approved or acknowledged by one motion. If an item proposed does not meet with approval of all council members, that item will be heard in regular order and then staff recommends items, you know, three through 20 or whatever, to be placed on the consent docket." So I understand that we had a vote last week where it was not unanimous. If you don't want to approve an agenda item that's proposed for the consent agenda, the proper process is to pull it from the consent agenda because if it's not unanimous, it's not appropriate for the consent agenda. And it needs to be heard after the consent agenda is voted on.
Just a second, please. Councilmember Holman.
But before we move past that, is abstaining an option?
No, there's another provision summarized that requires you all, unless you're allowed to recuse and the council has voted on recusal, to vote affirmatively or not on every item.
Would you say that again, please?
There's another provision in, I believe it's the charter, but it's attached here that says council members are required to affirmatively or negatively vote on every item. You can recuse, but only if it's required by the code and the council has voted on it.
All right. Thank you.
So we don't really do abstentions.
Okay.
Typically, what you see on your consent agenda items are policy resolutions, budget appropriations, which are done by resolutions, are sometimes on there. Typically, it's, you know, contracts that are routine, it is, trying to think of some of the other things, reports, yeah, things like that that are, that we place on the consent agenda, final plats. And those are things that are administrative or ministerial in nature. We do not place legislative items on the consent agenda. Now, legislation is typically an ordinance, but not always. And our charter provides that every motion, resolution or ordinance shall be reduced to writing and read before the final vote is taken thereon. We always state the motions on the record. All ordinances receive a second and final reading off the consent docket prior to being voted on. So the question that really leaves us with is about the resolutions. We have looked at this before and I think we have to look at the whole context of this provision. So this article that this provision is in in the charter is titled Legislative Department. The specific title of that code provision or charter provision is ordinances how adopted. This has been in our charter as far as I could find since 1919, which was the first city of Norman charter. And you'll see similar language from these early charters in a lot of cities because they were all sort of working from the same kind of model charter, right? So I think the distinction, when you read all of the language together, is really whether it's legislation or not. Some cities adopt their budget by resolution. That's legislative action. That's not administrative. That's not ministerial. We don't do that, but some cities do. And so you can have resolutions that really impact legislative matters. And I think that's what this provision is aimed for. And we're careful about what we put on the consent agenda so that we're not putting legislation on there. So I do not believe we have a legal issue with the consent agenda and the way we've been doing it. Let's see.
We may not have a legal issue, but we have a moral issue to our constituents in our community that can't maybe read or don't have access to get these agendas. They have a right to know what we're voting on, in my opinion, and in several other council members' opinion, as well as our constituents' opinion. So I agree, yeah, maybe legally we don't have to do it, but is it the right thing to do?
And that's not a question I can answer for you guys.
Right. I know. I just want to go on record saying that.
So we do provide copies at every meeting in the back of the room. So if someone can't access it online, it's always available for them.
But I have blind constituents. Like, that's not an option. Like, they have to hear to understand. And so if we're an inclusive community, we're not being inclusive with that, reading something aloud.
I would need to verify this, but my understanding, I do want to verify this because I haven't tried it myself, that there is a provision on our website now where you can have it read to you, but I want to verify that. I was just told that today.
But if they're blind.
I do know that our website is now fully ADA compliant. So anything that we place on there, they have the ability, anyone that has the readers, a lot of people that are legally blind but not totally blind have the readers. And it's some type of, something that they put over the document and it, they're able to read it that way. So we've been very careful to make sure everything we put on there does that now. The new agenda management software we're using is totally compliant with ADA so that it's putting it out there in the correct format so that they can utilize all that. But I will follow up on the audio piece of that for you all.
Councilmember? Is this the first time in our history that the consent docket has not been read aloud?
It's the first time that I recall.
So, I mean, I've been hearing from others that have conducted, like have served on planning commission or have served in council and have told me that they were told that they were not, that there was not an option to not read the consent docket in past years. So.
They weren't told by me that they didn't have that option. So I don't know who told them that. Certainly, a lot of cities do not read their consent dockets. Just came back from a training last week at my professional conferences and that actually came up. So I took the opportunity to ask, you know, my colleagues around the state about doing it. A lot of them do not. We had a lot of new clerks from around the state. So some of them asked about consent dockets. They didn't use them, smaller communities. So I just took the opportunity to sit back and listen. They asked about how to create them. That was, that was told and answered. And so I asked the question, so if you have a consent docket, once you place your items on consent, are you still required to read them aloud? And the answer was, no. And that was by an attorney.
Typically, in other cities or on other agendas, how many items are other, like other cities placing on their consent agenda?
I haven't, I haven't made that comparison. I couldn't, you know, I couldn't honestly answer that. I mean.
I'm just curious.
Cities like Oklahoma City, I don't know if they're reading them now. I know in years past, they didn't. I haven't, you know, I haven't done any comparisons recently to be able to tell you that. So I'm sure that varies.
Yeah, staff's kind of protocol for determining consent calendar versus non-consent calendar item, obviously ordinances, the legislative functions are never on the consent docket. And it's, so I mean, we just kind of look at it, what is it we're trying to accomplish? And if it's, you know, resolutions that have always been done on the consent docket and it's an annual thing, we keep them on the consent docket. So we try to do our darndest to be consistent in terms of what things we recognize as that's definitely a consent docket item versus a public hearing item or a legislative matter. So.
Consistent as of when? The last two months? Because it's not consistent of?
Well, I mean, as long as the history of our, you know, longest serving staff members, Mr. Francisco and Brenda Hall.
Previously, we've had, we haven't had almost every single item on the consent. And that's what's been going on.
What are you referring to, Councilmember?
What do you mean? What am I, we're talking about the consent docket. I'm referring to everything being placed on the consent docket at this point, since he's been in charge of the meetings.
We haven't changed anything.
Yes.
The items that are placed.
There are very few things left off of consent now. Are you saying that that's not true?
I'm saying that items that are on the consent docket are the same types of items that have always been placed on consent docket. Whether or not there are items off consent, they're not, the meetings vary. We don't always have the same types of items on every meeting. Some meetings we may have three or four items off consent, some meetings we may have none, some meetings we may have 10. So the types of items that are on the consent docket and are off the consent docket haven't changed.
Previous to this mayor being in here, we did not have this many items on consent. And that's all I'm going to say.
We had the same types of items, Councilmember Studley.
I disagree with that. I disagree with your statement. I mean, they might be the same types, but it's not the same amount. And that's what the issue is.
That varies from agenda to agenda.
Correct. So then is it just coincidental that in the last two months then? Isn't it just coincidental? Okay, okay, Brenda.
No mayor, under our ordinances in our charter, sets the agenda. It's the city manager working with the city clerk.
I didn't say set the agenda. I said, what's on consent?
And it's staff that's, that's putting in the agenda what items we recommend being placed on consent. And that has not changed. Moving on to conferences, study sessions and committee meetings, those same rules of decorum apply to all types of council meetings. We still follow parliamentary procedure, Robert's Rules, in those meetings, although they are less formal because they're not a voting meeting and it's meant to be discussion. Council conferences are provided for in the code, section 2-102. They're held prior to regular council meetings and at any other time deemed necessary about the call of the mayor or the city manager. They're supposed to be devoted to matters where the interchange of information preliminary to public discussion is deemed essential. So a lot of times, you know, if it's an ordinance or if it's some item coming to council that we think the public's going to be interested in, it's getting placed on your council conference agenda so that that discussion can be had. No votes are taken at those and the mayor, of course, serves as the presiding officer. Study sessions are not provided for anywhere in the code. They have historically been set on the first, third and fifth Tuesday of each month. And they're treated similarly to council conferences. We aren't taking votes. We're having discussion. We're talking about things that are likely to come forward to council so we can get some input and get your questions answered. And the mayor presides over those as well. Council committees have been created for a number of years and used by various mayors to sort of funnel some of the priorities of council to smaller groups to have the discussion, get the feedback and gauge consensus for placing an item on council's agenda. The mayor historically has selected those chairs. And the chair typically serves to facilitate the delivery of the information and the discussion among council members with the goal of providing staff with some direction so we know what to do with that topic. If it needs to come forward to the full council or it needs more work, those are what the committees are for. We don't have any code provision or anything setting up those committees. And the number of committees and the names of the committees have changed over the years. Times they meet have changed. But that is how they have typically been used.
So what do we do when things like last Thursday happened? Where we have a committee chair who doesn't want to allow the rest of council to speak and wants to move it forward without discussing what the consensus is?
I think what's been done is, is one of the solutions to that, and it was a rule of three. So we have a provision in our code book that requires us to place any item on an agenda with the rule of three, which means if three council members ask for something to be placed on an agenda, it gets placed on an agenda. And so that item in particular will be placed on Tuesday's agenda for first reading. We also want to discuss it at the council conference so we can get an idea of what you want the final product to look like.
Right. But you also. How this says in here that it is, the chair's function is to listen to the rest of council and bring forward what the consensus is. So when that's not happening in the meeting, what do we do?
You talk to the mayor.
As a member of council?
The mayor says.
The mayor appoints the chairs. So if you, as members of that committee, feel like the chair's not functioning as they should, then it's your responsibility to talk to the mayor.
Well, I did. But I'm asking you, oh, he took care of it?
He moved it forward.
Well, we moved it forward on our own. As council, we asked that by rule of three, we did it. But that's what I'm saying, like, in my, in my opinion, and based off of what we're reading here, not just my opinion, what's written right here, it's that the chair of the meeting takes the consensus of what council says to move an item forward. So what I'm saying is if the committee chair becomes a dictator and it's no longer a democracy, how do we handle that as a body?
If you will please speak to me. I, we had a discussion about it and we changed, I did just exactly what needed to be done, which was agree to making sure that that went on the agenda. You obviously had three. There, I think by the time we got done, there were five people. I had a discussion with Councilmember Lynn and we discussed the difference in rules and what we were supposed to do.
So then you have made it clear that in committee meetings, it's the consensus of the vote of everyone and not just the chair.
In the committee, we don't vote, but it's the consensus.
No, it's the consensus of what we're discussing. So, so that, the understanding is that you can't just say because me as the chair, I don't want it, I'm going to be a baby and say we can't talk about it. So that conversation was had, that you can't be a dictator as a committee chair, that you have to listen to everyone, even people who you may not agree with.
That a similar discussion was had.
Okay. So then we shouldn't see that behavior again. Thank you. That's all I want to know.
Councilmember Lynn?
Did I operate outside the rules for moving an agenda item and moving it forward? Whether they liked it or not, was it outside of Robert's rules?
I have not gone back and watched the full meeting. I will say we don't have rules that talk about how the committees should function other than Robert's rules. Typically, how chairs have functioned is to facilitate the discussion. And so if you want to limit discussion, that should be announced at the beginning of the meeting and applied to all topics. And not, you know, you don't want to pick and choose topics and when to cut it off. It's better, you're better served, the council's better served if everyone knows those ground rules at the beginning.
Councilmember Foreman?
So I wasn't here for the meeting, but I was informed about it and I did watch it. And so I think maybe what Councilmember Studley is trying to get to is that me watching it, people wanted to still discuss it and the chair wanted to move it forward. So if they're not allowed to, then it becomes a screaming match, right? Then it just becomes a fight. So how do we avoid that? Like, what do we do in that?
That gets back to your, it gets all the way back to your decorum rules about how you treat one another. And Frank, I'm just going to be really frank.
Please.
Because we've gone way past this. And Catherine is going to be working for you. Daryl works for you. I don't work for you. So.
How about it, Brenda?
It is not okay to speak to one another the way you all speak to one another. You are a governing body and you operate in business meetings. You should not direct comments to one another regardless of how you feel about one another. You're not going to always agree, especially politically, and that's okay because that's not what we're here to do. The work of city council at a local level is really not about politics. It's about building roads and flushing toilets and picking up trash. And that's what we're here to do. And we can't do that if we're constantly bickering and fighting and. You should not direct comments to one another, regardless of how you feel about one another. You're not going to always agree, especially politically. And that's okay, because that's not what we're here to do. The work of city council at a local level is really not about politics. It's about building roads and flushing toilets and picking up trash. And that's what we're here to do. And we can't do that if we're constantly bickering and fighting and trying to draw lines in the sand. And you can't. So, we have to get to a place where we stop doing that, because it's not okay. It's not okay. And we just have to -- you just -- it's just not appropriate. It's not appropriate behavior for a business meeting, so...
You're preaching to the choir here, and I completely agree with you. But this is all stuff we would have known prior to these meetings that we've been having for the last few months anyway. So, clearly, that's not going to change anytime soon.
Clearly, it needs to change.
But, oh, need, need and happening are two separate things. So, if that hap -- like, do we just -- I mean, I wasn't here, but like, I probably would have just got up and left. Because I don't -- a woman's crying. A woman's walking out crying.
There was a woman crying.
Yes, I was!
See?
I think this is exactly what we're talking about here. Let's all be adults in the room.
Pastor Hall's over here trying to preach to us. And we're not listening.
Guys, you can't yell.
But, I mean, do we -- I mean, what's -- for me, I may, okay, I'm done here. I'm just going to walk out. Like, I don't want to get into it.
That's fine.
Do we just -- but then, like, we can't get business? Like, I don't -- I don't know what to do.
If that happens, would you please call me?
Absolutely. But you were in the -- Daryl, none of you guys were. I mean, no one was here. I mean, it was like a horrible time for all the right people to not be here.
What I heard about it, and it sounded awful. And I was very upset for whatever happened. It was awful, so... But that's why I'm saying, we can't behave that way. And you can do better. I know you can. We can all do better. We have to.
Councilmember Studdly.
I agree that I could be better, but I will not sit silently as someone berades a young woman and she sits there bawling in front of us. I won't be quiet about that. I won't.
I understand, but I -- I understand that.
Because at that point, the professional is gone. She's bawling.
I agree. I agree, Councilwoman Studdly. But what we're saying is, there's been a lot that has happened in the past couple of years. A lot of behavior that has not been professional. But it's not -- we have to draw a line at some point in time and say, "That's not okay. We're moving forward, and we're going to conduct professional decorum in our business meetings." And that's what we're saying. So, today, we've moved forward. We're going to be professionals. We have to draw the line sometime and recognize that the behavior was bad, and we're not going to do that anymore.
You can't even tell the truth that your behavior was bad. Then how do you move forward?
That's a whole nother...
Yeah, it is.
I'm not going to sit here and be rated. If that girl was crying, I sure didn't see it in that meeting. And I promise you that she was pushing back on me every bit as hard. When I asked her a question, she was jumping in there. She wouldn't even let me get a question out of my mouth. So, I'm not worried about this girl and her crying. She wasn't crying in that meeting. She was pushing back. And then, if y'all want to act like that, I let y'all go. And y'all just started hemming and hawing all over the place. And I had to ask you many times.
Councilmember, let's stick to reading these rules, please, and working towards a new goal. Thank you.
Okay.
Can I just say something real quick? I think it's obviously apparent to everyone here that there's a lot of people watching these meetings. And every action or reaction we have reflects on the city. And I'm just going to say that we should only be doing things that put a positive light on Norman, never anything that draws negative attention. And that goes for anybody in here. That goes for any community partner that we want to drag through the mud. That goes through any personal politics that we have. I mean, I just think we have been elected to represent the city and to do it in a way that is becoming of Norman, not unbecoming of Norman. So, that's all.
So, I'll just close with this. Just some general best practices, of course, is to follow your rules. But keep in mind that you have a fiduciary duty to the city, and that takes precedent over politics and over your relationships with each other. That includes the duty of care. So, you have to be fully and adequately informed and act with care when making decisions for the city. Or one of our trusts includes the duty of loyalty, which requires you act and make decisions in the best interest of the city or its public trust and not in your own personal interest. We emphasize this every year in orientation, that preparation is everything. We've kind of gotten away from this in the last few years, but there were times when we never had a question from the dais that we didn't know was coming unless something came up in the meeting. So, please, get back to that. Because if we can have the answers to your questions and say them publicly, everyone looks better if we've been able to prepare and we know what's coming. So, communication is critical. And I will just say, it's very hard for staff to be in the middle of these fights. I've already gotten a high heart rate alert on my watch in this meeting. We don't want to be in the middle of your fights. We want to work with all of you, regardless of whether we like you, don't like you, agree with you, don't agree with you. You're my party, you're not. It doesn't matter. We have to work with all of you regardless, and we want to do that. So, please, work with us and communicate with us. And we will help you do your job to the best of your ability. And that's what we want to do.
Thank you. Councilmember.
Who writes the oath that we take when we get sworn in?
It's in the Constitution, I believe.
Okay. Can we get a copy of our oaths? Can we put that sent to us?
It was interesting that Brenda and I, we were looking at the state constitution and whatever codes, whatever section Brenda put her fingers on it. When I read it, I thought, "Oh, my gosh, that is -- that's right out of the Oath of Office." We know where that language came from, right out of the state constitution.
It was one of the sessions I sat in last week at Copper and about from the state auditors and a lot of cities that went through some bad times, violated the constitutional oath and did some prison time, so...
You never want to hear the grand jury knocking on your door.
Exactly.
Not enough. Not good.
All right. Any other comments? All right. Yes?
Well, and I'll just echo some of the same comments. I mean, the time I've been on council, I've mentioned before, I've served with over 30 different council members and four mayors now. I can assure you, all of them did not get along and agree and maybe not like -- well, I knew of a few that did not like each other so much that Mayor Rosenthall had to change the whole seating chart on council because they couldn't sit next to each other. So, I've seen it get really contentious before. And as things do, as we're dealing with very complicated issues that are -- drive a lot of passion in people and emotions, we have to find a way, as the elected body, to try to address them, not without emotion, but we have to control it better than the public does because we have to make rational decisions. And I think the public does, when they watch these meetings, I think we do have to remember that. They are on TV, and not just our public, but anybody, anywhere can watch them now. And so, anybody that's thinking about coming to Norman, any families, any businesses, they can all watch how we're conducting business in Norman and here at City Hall. So, we just all need to have that in mind, I think, as we're here, that people are watching and that people expect a certain level of professionalism out of all of us. And they expect us to work together. We were all elected by our words. Mayor was elected by the whole city. And so, we may not want to work with each other. We may not like each other, all those things. But the people sent us all here to this table. And so, we have an obligation to do what's right and try to get through these big issues we're dealing with. And so, my approach as a council member has always been to try to have an open mind and open communication with everybody that I've served with. My approach as a Chair member has been to try to gather consensus from the committee members, opposition and in favor of things, and give information to the staff so they can prepare the best, you know, information and stuff for us so that we can make the best decisions. And then, but generally, I favor on the whole council being able to weigh in on stuff so that we can make a decision as a body. So, I hope we can look at that, think about those things going forward.
Thank you, sir. Well put. For adjourned.